And we are live, welcome back everybody. Sorry to scare you, we are live back on Facebook.
That type of an item where it's always on their protection and policy committee, a standing item. You know, talking about what are our numbers, like what's causing it? What can the citizens do having it on our webpage with the city on Facebook? And then we can share it, others can share it, you know, just stand up and keep it open discussion. I think that's what people are looking for information, make it easy for them to find what's going on and help, you know, resolve it. Because it makes all of us.
Well, and putting that also clear up when people really have shots fired at your finance, right? The discrepancy that could be there, which can affect the way you feel when you're living in a neighborhood. Uh, I'd love to ask your thoughts because this topic is so important. And you're not running against each other, so we have this time to get a little bit more.
Oh, we have.
Veer into that, that's true. So the governor of Wisconsin recently came here and had a press conference and announced that he was going to provide fifty million to municipalities in Wisconsin. And specifically, I believe the number was three hundred thousand that was going to be coming to Green Bay. I know tribal law enforcement is receiving resources as well. So with an extra three hundred thousand, and obviously the chief would be allocating that throughout, you know, his department. What are your thoughts on that? And how do you see, you know, this very generous gift, something that I'm sure every city could use for potentially, you know, proactive type of measures taken? But what do you see as far as the ability to sustain the investment as a council itself? One of me raising taxes, like what are your thoughts on that? And how do you feel about this sustaining that investment that he's offering?
Yeah, I mean, as a member of the council, I will say, and I'm not trying to sound like I'm taking cheap shot. But we as a council were not informed of that press conference, so I was surprised to hear about it as we're watching the news. And there has been very little direction or insight that has filtered down to the city council level. So I don't even know that there's any conversation that has existed between council members, the administration, the governor's office. So it's hard for me to answer that.
I would prefer like how, I think we're the last to know on that information. I just know there was money given, I don't know if it was given to the city or just directly to the police department. I would hope it's for some one-time use, if we don't want to build in positions that won't be funded next year. That's the worst way to go about that, because those positions never seem to go away and they were left in a hole. So not much information there, but honestly, the first I heard was the best I've done the news.
Okay, didn't want to catch you up there. I just, I saw the press conference and I, I thought immediately, thought, okay, this is very generous. But then my brain went to how do you sustain this investment as a council body?
I would like to buy police cars perhaps. There's some of the other things, we've been borrowing money over a ten-year length of time for items and equipment that will only last five years. So asking a more specific question, I really think that that's what we should consider. Because we have these needs, we have a fleet of vehicles, they only last so many years. And if we're looking for, for funding to be free government or budget, to handle those personnel, which is maybe getting caught up on police cars and other equipment would be a good thing to do.
It's actually your turn, you can piggyback into my current question.
Sorry.
So you go.
Me, okay. Uh, what role can the city council play in establishing affordable and accessible housing?
Well, I think you've probably seen the last few years, different developments come forward and that was a part of it. And then they fall apart and they change, set up a party driven or something like that. So it's not that there hasn't been an effort for trying, it's, uh, things always seem to not work with certain developers here and there. And I think especially with, you know, I think Gary Gennert, she said that's one of the things he wants to do. So I, I would anticipate we'll see more of that. A lot of those things are driven from our planning department, the mayor, and that's handed off to us to approve or not. I don't see why we can't do more.
Yeah, I, I tend to take a three hundred and sixty view when it comes to affordable housing. One, state tax credits would be very beneficial to us to build those sorts of units. I would say we have to look at our existing housing stuff, which, you know, we do this regularly as a city. Uh, but we have to understand currently landlords, when we're looking at property owners throughout the city, whether it be a large housing development, or maybe a landlord that wants five or 10 properties that they make a profit of to live or supplement their income. Uh, we do have, we are in a lot of ways the victim of other governments' policies. Now, federal government had put a moratorium on evicting people during COVID. I'm not disagreeing with that decision, by the way. What I'm saying is that, that then created a trickle-down effect. If landlords who are really struggling to pay for their mortgage themselves can't collect rent from people, then at a time when there's no longer a moratorium, then when a tenant is up for extending their lease, they no longer stay in that apartment. Then the landlord makes improvements and then jacks up the rent, several hundred dollars benefits, affordable housing too. Uh, and what I would say, our tax rate in Green Bay, if we're looking to develop land and properties and apartment complexes, when you go from a tax rate of nine dollars and sixteen cents to nine dollars and eighty cents within just three years, landlords, property owners, anyone looking to build big complexes, that large tax increase, if it happens year after year, will require them to charge more for rent, which then raises and creates barriers for affordable housing. So I have a very open mind, it's a big problem, we know it's a big problem. So when we talk about affordable housing, we have to consider everything, take a three hundred and sixty degree approach. And that's what I'm looking to do more and more in my role as city council.
Tangentially related question before I get to the question on elections. Our ministry has, has served out just one in particular individual. And what I'm talking about here is tenants' rights, she was clueless. If there was a landlord, I'm criticizing her, I'm just saying she didn't know her rights. Where her landlord entered without her permission, did no warning, and wanted to let in someone to do maintenance, but her minor senior was present, she was not, and we're like, hey, this can't happen. And do you think enough is being done either by the city or agencies or whatever, that particularly in economically challenged neighborhoods, that tenants understand their rights?
There could almost be a curve line when it comes to communication, people's rights, understanding their rights as tenants, but also responsibilities sold in my day-to-day profession for the last several months and then two years in the past. I, I dealt quite a bit with landlords and I would say that, and tenants. And I would say that if we as a city can develop resources and training to help bridge that gap of misunderstanding, I think we should look into that. We got, the police department does do landlord training, so we're covered on that end. Perhaps we need to do a little more through partnership to have more of those community education listening sessions, or maybe do it through neighborhood associations, that might be a good way to start.
I guess I've been fortunate, I haven't had as many issues around that topic. When I have though, and a little more in time, I'd like to get involved right away with the landlord and try and work it out. And it usually does work, when landlord feels you're stepping in to try and help him, or if he doesn't have any power to do anything, you can resolve it. I do like to direct people over to the safety of the county, show them where they can get help. Because a lot of them maybe needs legal help and that's where I can't help them no more. Just show them where to give it, that's, that's more my role.
So then onto the election question. Uh, will we then, will be asked in candidates, would you allow the third-party entity to be involved in the city election process again after the 2020 experience? And, you know, what's your confidence level on the current oversight? And if a Green Bay resident said, hey, I'm worried about the integrity of the elections, what would your response be? It's a lot of people, any of those that you would like, to start with the third party.
That's easy to acknowledge.
And why or why not?
I think, I know that our clerk's department is the one who should be handling the election period, end of story. They should run it, they should see it through, oversee it. Uh, and there should be no one from the outside giving them little pointers or tips, especially having access to that, they shouldn't. So, no, that should be our city clerk, that's it.
Yeah, I, I don't like third-party groups being involved in administering our election, the funding source from the center for technical support. Although I voted for both, I would say that I voted for the funds where as we could not as council members have direct oversight on the day-to-day functioning of the administration helping elections. Now, there was the ad hoc committee, so we kind of had a general idea. But as far as all those day-to-day decisions that were being made, that was outside of our, our knowledge. And I know someone like myself who likes to question and make sure that we have integrity in all we do in local government, especially elections. I would ask a lot of really uncomfortable questions to say, why do we have these third-party groups? Why do we have advisors? Why are we going to have an individual who has a lot of access to many parts of our election administration? So, roughly right, I don't envision any scenario where we would ever, should ever take third-party funding to administer elections.
And I'll just abbreviate the question again for both of you. If a resident said, hey, I'm concerned about the integrity of city elections, what would your response be?
I would ask them, what part is it? I, I had several of those questions and I brought forward a couple of different items to committee and to councils to try and address those, at least get a discussion on it. And to look into like upcuring the absentee ballot envelopes. How do we do that? Who can do it? There's a lot of questions on that, so why not get it discussed publicly, openly, and get a process in place where everybody knows what it is? I would dig into what is, what part is it that you don't trust and then just have a little bit of discussion with it.
Yeah, and I would, I don't take an extreme view on either direction. So when you say, do we have integrity or truth, we trust elections, that's say no, or if they know, that's real alarming. Uh, one thing I will say, think about this forum right now with other candidates. There are people who right now are watching or getting their door knocked on by a candidate, who are really excited to vote in the election in two weeks, okay? The election, two years ago, the last election Chris and I were on a ballot for, uh, there were hundreds of, not several thousands of people in Green Bay, who through the actions of their city government did not get an opportunity to vote. So when we talk about integrity, we really have to understand the place that many of our Green Bay residents are coming from. There are three elections in twenty-three months where the city has done something that was considered irregular. And there is certainly an open complaint happening right now, an open code of ethics complaint against a member of our city government. And so this is a really complex thing, I'm not yes, no. As Chris said, we need to talk more about what it is for elections that people are concerned about.
Uh, moving on to another question, a little context first. We know from data collected by nonprofits that roughly twenty-six hundred people, singles, families, and unoccupied youth used an area agency because they were experiencing homelessness. It's important to note, this number does not include individuals who are experiencing homelessness, but are living in cars, storage facilities, staying on couches. Has the city done enough to support these individuals? How can you, as a council, council member, work to improve the situation?
Homelessness is heartbreaking for a lot of reasons other than the obvious ones. And I think the most heartbreaking thing about it all and frustrating thing for policymakers like Pauline Aguirre and I is that pretty much every civilization that has ever existed has dealt with some level of poverty, homelessness, mental health, uh, resources not being available, criminal justice reform issues. I don't think that any state or city municipality has it completely figured out. And I think that anything we can do to talk about it and put resources towards a certain solution, the better. We do have a homelessness issue in Green Bay. Fortunately, we do have a lot of resources and agencies that are contributing, a lot of churches and faith-based groups. We haven't been able to turn that corner. I think COVID has made circumstances much worse in a lot of ways. I personally have been involved through my employment and through my volunteer years, working closely with, uh, say the Micah Center or St. John's Home Leadership, so by no means an expert. But I do know that there are a lot of people that are working towards a solution. And I really try, as I said earlier, take a three hundred and sixty degree view and leverage the accounting resources and housing resources. And that anyone in my personal life that I'm involved with, if they're facing housing insecurity, I feel comfortable enough to, um, refer them to the proper resources. But the sad part is I know that we're never going to completely solve the problem. And that's on a personal level, very heartbreaking.
Uh, well said, Jesse, I agree. And you can see its effects even on, you know, the Green Bay public school district. I mean, my kids went to West, they have friends who went there who are dealing with this. And it affects their life and it affects most definitely their schoolwork. So definitely need to tie in with our county government and even the surrounding governments around here. Because Green Bay has mobile services downtown, we give majority of the homeless, I mean, you don't see them sitting out in Hobart, because there's nothing, you know, for them to help from out there. So we, we get that and we need to work properly with that. Shouldn't just be throwing money at it hoping for the best, it needs to be directed and guided so that it's used the best. Can't ignore it, mobile service can address this market.
We, uh, we all know this, that there has been a spike, almost a question spiked inflation on the national level. And I'm not trying to call my age, I'm sixty, and, and I was a young man entering the workforce the last time this country faced crushing inflation. So I, I remember it well. As older persons, individually, what's your individual approach to the city budget to protect taxpayers during times like these? And we've not seen times like these in some four decades.
Might they call the burden as probably an example of just recently here? Go on, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, anyone who follows local government probably knows that I'm very questionable of some of the objectives and priorities perfectly within the city government. Uh, I think in a lot of ways, city of Green Bay government is its own work, it gets in its own way in some of the financial decisions we're making. We are going to be facing inflation and gaspar here with OBD. And just specifically, just quickly throw some of the things. We had an overage of the city finances in this budget here, so maybe we spent less than what we made. So, or what we took in in taxes and other fees. So we, uh, we're going to use four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars towards, uh, city bonuses for, uh, for city workers. And I'm not against that idea, but what I proposed was that we use the ARCA funds, that's what that ARCA funds are there for, it's COVID response. And instead, save that four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to keep on our general funds. So then we enter the two thousand twenty-three budget process, we have a little money that we can rely on in our contingency fund. Hundred thousand dollars of the OBD cooperative governance agreement, uh, funds for rebranding, that's another questionable decision. Uh, three years ago, we moved one point one million dollars of our forestry budget to stormwater utility bills. That's another issue, sixty thousand ARCA funds for rain barrels. Uh, green infrastructure, it was proposed that we spend two point five million dollars, uh, towards green infrastructure and five city street projects without a clear measurable that we know will be successful in improving stormwater or flood resilience. So there are a lot of really strange decisions. And I, and I'm hoping that the city government does not face inflation. I know we will, but will we have the resources? We have a declining tax rate and that will hurt our ability to redevelop or develop land, which then puts us in this endless cycle. And I'm hoping that we have the fiscal discipline the next few years to really question some of these big decisions. This is hundreds of thousands of dollars, up to a few million dollars, now recording towards things that I don't think the city government should be focusing on resources on.
My comment would be, I would hope and expect we don't look to just tax our way over it. Because people will be having a six, seven, eight percent increase in their daily expenses. We don't need to pile on to that next year with, you know, maximizing how much we can collect just to cover our shortfall because of gassing increases or, you know, the cost of everything that we're buying. So we need to start heading about right now and putting away money and thinking of ways that we can offset it and it not hurt the people who are trying to help them. So it's going to be a challenge, but that's what we have to do, that's what a private company would do if they just want to stay in business, that's what we have to do.
Uh, and one specific thing in regards to inflation, when we negotiated a cooperative governance agreement with OINDA, I wanted to put a, uh, an amendment in there to allow us, uh, to adjust for inflation. Uh, this was mostly done in closed session, but when we went into open session, I was able to offer that amendment and fail on hold of seven to five. So right now, we're providing, uh, services by agreement and then, you know, I think it's a good, at the end, that we have an agreement. But we're going to be providing services for some properties that we're not collecting revenue on. And if the cost of providing the services, whether it be fuel, equipment, manpower, health insurance, whatever it is, we now don't have a mechanism in that agreement to adjust for inflation, so we receive more money for the services that we're offering.
So my last question, I think could actually be tied to the, the budget conversation. Um, and potentially something that would reduce the burden of, of budget shortfalls and investments. What can the city do to incentivize economic development?
A lot of the time you just get held up a link. And I mean that, that sounds simple, but we have a great planning department and economic development team, but sometimes they get a little too particular of what they're requiring. And, um, we hear that behind the scenes from developments that didn't happen because we asked too much and all of a sudden they're popping up in the shop. So, um, I don't know what you think, but I just, that, that's just my simple little part right there.
Yeah, I, I have faith in our economic development, um, department. One thing that when we were talking about rebranding, it was proposed that rebranding would help us with economic development. Perhaps that could be the case, but it's anecdotal evidence at this point, but what the economic development director is not here, so I'm not intending to quote him directly. But I asked, what are some things that are driving challenges in economic development? And there are two things that he mentioned. One would be our tax rate, which are recovered, and then the second would be the permitting process, how to get projects approved. So if we're looking to develop land, we really have to focus on those two things. I think rebranding, um, is a short-sighted view on how we can improve it. Rebranding would only work if people outside your city building rebranded. People inside Green Bay, hey, rebranding, cool thing, but if it's not attracting development for all over the country, then it's not going to be effective. And how can you possibly with a hundred thousand dollars in your mark promote a new brand to the rest of the country? It's just a, it's a underestimation of what it truly costs. We should be focusing our resources and our attention to how we can make it so that people wanted to develop here businesses. And real specific, in my district, the 12th district, I have municipal boundaries of three other municipalities, Hobart, Ashwagand, and Howard. Their assessed tax rate is much, much less than Green Bay. So our tax rate isn't that, uh, an obstacle that we need to overcome if we're going to have people develop in Green Bay.
How much actual land is out there that could be developed? That doesn't have an existing parcel of the development, so not redeveloped, just developed?
Yeah, uh, far east side, there's some, some, on the far east side, there is the industrial park and a Tiff district that ended up closing early because of the lack of growth out there. Uh, on the far fringes of the city, when I go in my district of the far west side and on the far east side, I see a lot of open land in the Towne Scott area. There's a, you know, there's a possibility of some partnership there that they're coming to the city Green Bay limits. Or on the far west side, there's a bit of a war with challenge because, uh, OINDA happens to own a lot of land out there. If the land is put in trust, uh, there certainly could be a development there, but it would never be taxable properly. So it could fit that community, but would it be taxable? No, it would not.
So is it your opinion that, uh, there's a lot of, it's like landlocked, so there's not a lot available?
Perhaps, so then maybe we look at our zoning and ordinance and start building up rather than building there.
Our biggest area of growth right now is the east side, the far east side, is to get into the Towne Scott. We have five thousand acres out there, mostly privately owned, or less than all privately owned. Uh, in addition to, I think, the bunkers have a development that's going on for residential. So there's, there's a lot of potential there. Some of this, we need to get, uh, our utilities out there. So there's the debate, development need to come first, and utilities come first, and that's a little bit of an issue. We, council turned down a potential project of the Towne Scott because some didn't feel that it looked right, it wasn't right for the spot. But right there, we put a head development, we like that, we turned it down because something better than coming ten years from now.
And I have one more question. Um, years ago, maybe six years ago, there was a comprehensive plan that was, uh, invested in and created. And I think it was, it might have been two thousand seven?
Smart Growth.
Smart Growth, yep. So what's in place right now for placemaking, for, for potentially forecasting the mining, um, development? Is there anything or are we still working with that?
My brain's freezing at the moment, I can't think of anything specific. But we have a economic development director who started about a year, year and a half ago. So I, I, I don't know, I'm not on the redevelopment authority or the economic development authority, it was at one point. But I would imagine there's something, but yeah, to my knowledge, I think we still do use that. You'll see requests something to change, maybe what the allocation is. Daniel Sextal, he's our, um, director, he's, uh, seems real energetic and has a lot of ideas that I look forward to when they're digging in. You just have to know whoever you might totally go at it, but just keep this in the loop.
But I have one more. So do you believe in your opinion that the city should invest in looking at an updated comprehensive plan? For how things are working, not working together, is that something that you?
On the surface, yes. Uh, the caveat to that is when you think of something like that, it requires consultants and, uh, billions of dollars perhaps. So before I enter that, I'm going to have to check with the economic development director to see what brands, what resources, what we actually have, if what we can be supplemented. But that would be my concern, is the cost to put a planning price.
So the final question that I have, and again, I want to preface this with current experience. And I will admit a naivete, and until my wife and I got into the industry, we didn't realize, at least I didn't, to speak for her, what a luxury individual transportation is, having a car. And that's the key to getting out of poverty and homelessness and being able to get around. And it's, it's amazing, you know, someone gets a two thousand more Honda for three thousand dollars, it's like Bastille Day for them. And this is going to condition of the roads because old cars, cars are hard skid by bad roads, no doubt. So are you satisfied with the current road improvement progress? And if not, what can we do to improve the improvement?
Phil's laughing over there, older than you, older. I think everybody's tired of me talking about roads.
Well, but people are talking about roads more than in the, in, and, and Chris has known me through my previous life. All the years that I did that, I, I think, again, we are literally on a candidate's street level with us now in what we're doing.
We have a lot of road that need attention. I mean, I think I mentioned to someone in the audience, I was driving on East End of Roosevelt. And they knew it needed to be replaced, but unless they rolled out a holy cow, it was, uh, not, not pleasurable. I know I've brought to committee several times some of my roads that need to be replaced. I've done as much as I can, I think, to push the amount of roadwork we need to do each year. Now, you can say you're doing work, but you do have to pay for it, it needs to come from somewhere, it needs to be engineered. And unfortunately, the cost of things hurt us this year and that same amount of roads you would have done last year are now costing more. So you're doing the same amount of roads, but it's costing more. I wish we could get a time when things would be a little less and we could get ahead. But there is a tension, I think, from staff and from majority of the council to do more roadwork. We just need to realize the strict cost for it and do it. But then you need to take from somewhere else, it's not just a matter of spending more, it's, it's, the effort's there, the blow is there, but, um, I seem to have to ask you, can you, um, ask the question again?
Well, just, as, I'll, I'll read it this time. Are you satisfied with the current road condition progress that is trying to improve the evolved conditions of roads in the city of Green Bay? If not, what are your ideas to improve the rate of road improvement?
Overall, no, I'm not happy with the progress made of roads. We have made significant progress in that we have a funding source, the, the real tax is meant to eliminate special assessments on residential properties. So my district on Hill Press, there are over thirty, nearly forty properties to redo or reconstruct that road out there. In two thousand nine, I, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, it would have been on average, an assessment of thirteen thousand dollars per property owner on average. Some had an assessment of over fifty thousand dollars. So that was creating people in those neighborhoods that turned down the road projects so that the city would get further behind. Because of the cost of homeowners and property. the cost to homeowners and property owners, we weren't then doing the roads because they opted not to have it worked out at all because of the cost. So we put the wheel tax in in 2018, 2019. My concern there is that the first budget, when we had the wheel tax, that the administration and the city council diverted like $300,000 or $400,000 of that wheel tax revenue towards basically filling potholes. When I passed the wheel tax, and I was a reluctant vote, but I voted yes, I thought that we would have that money there for roadwork, not filling potholes. So I am concerned again with budgeting and inflation, as you mentioned last year, because the raw material costs are going to go up. And what I think we need to really focus in on is developing our relationship with contractors, because we don't do road construction or reconstruction with city staff. We bid it out. And some of these contracts, we're only getting a few bids. And so if we had a more competitive process, if we worked on encouraging more contractors out there to bid on our projects, we might be able to get a better return. For some reason, it might be qualified contractors, maybe it may be, although we don't want to say this publicly too much, it might be that Green Bay may be a little more difficult to deal with compared to Pierre, Hobart, Howard. I don't know what it is, but we really need to look at that, because when you're bidding on million, multi-million dollar projects, you only have a few bids to work from. Hopefully, we can expand that a little bit.
As I was just going to mention, Pierre does 3.2%, 3.5% of the roads every year that they redo. And so I always kind of held that as our local gold standard and try to get to. And I know it's a ways off. But to find out we're at 1.5%, 1.6%, oh my gosh, we might get to 1.7%. It's, that wheel tax just pays for the homeowner's partial. So the city still needs to borrow for our part. And, you know, unless we just borrow our way to infinity, which is never going to, we need to creatively carefully get that work. And if I could add, the bond issue this year was proposed $20 million for lending supported bonding. City council thought that was too high, held it, sent it back to the community, got down to like 12 or 13 million. Of that, there are $4.5 million of road projects, $4.5 million. They wanted to add $2.5 million of borrowed money for green infrastructure. Keep in mind, we have no comprehensive plan that we ever approved. We don't know what the benefit of that green infrastructure would be, other than anecdotal evidence. So if we would have had that $2.5 million, luckily, the council voted it down. And so now we have that. Think about what $2.5 million would do for roadwork. We could have, instead of doing five roads at 4.5, we could have done many more roads for seven million. So that's how we're still proposing that one proposed.
So if I'm, well, I am a constituent in Green Bay, and I'm curious about the road conditions of progress. And I'm just curious to have a look. Is there a place on the city's website where I could just go in, find out, you know, the progress that's out there?
There will be soon interactive on the website, but Chris and I are both on the Improvement Services Committee. So there is a document, there are over 100 pages, where the city this year and then 2019 rated every single road in Green Bay from a scale of either zero to 10 or one to 10. So that is a public record. The city has worked very hard with the IT department to get that put on the website. So at any given moment, you can go look at your street and interact with that and see what that score is.
Yes, that wraps up, okay. So I guess that wraps up the portion with ultimate brunette. And Chris, Mary, thank you for joining us for the conversation. We're going to go forward soon with District 4's race with Bill Galvin and Natalie Hockman, and they will join us shortly.
I was, I came for the punchline.
I'm sorry. It would have been a gifted time.
All right.
All right. Thank you, everybody.